Okay, six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody here and call the meeting to order. I'm gonna read a statement from Cindy Webker. Very, very thought out. One thing I'd like to point out is at the end of this, it says, "Sorry, Chris, I get wordy when it's close to my heart." And I think most of our teachers would probably say that. And I sent Cindy a message back that said, "Please don't be sorry for caring." So, "Our mission statement: ESAC County empowers all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society." To me, it means that we are all responsible for helping our students. It isn't just the responsibility of the teachers, but the entire school system: teachers, administrators, associates, cooks, janitorial staff, bus drivers, parents, and school board members. We want students that, when going into the real world, they will be able to be productive and academic with the academic preparation we give them. Even more importantly, they will be able to communicate effectively in an ever-changing society with ever-changing tools. We are preparing students for things that even when they haven't thought of yet, they will be responsible for our future, and that's what we are empowering them for." Thought that was very well-written and very well-thought-out. Thanks, Cindy. Okay, need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We don't have to amend anything?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move on to consent items. John, you wanna?
Anybody have anything on the minutes? We had minutes from our meeting in Carroll, from our regular meeting, and from our workshop, the work session. Financial statement, as far as the operating fund goes, very similar to last month. Maybe a little bit more on target with last year, so that's positive. This month's operating fund bills were only 79,000, so I'd expect next month to report a little okay again. With that in mind, just got maybe half a dozen things on the bills. Touch on the card member service bills. We had one in operating, one in activity, and since that's a credit card, it's just a good idea for us to go over those. In operating, we had some transportation expenses, some classroom supplies, and then some technology stuff. A lot of times, we order different repair parts or toner or what have you. That's paid for with credit card. Same vendor over in the activity fund, the $1,300 was pretty much the ag department. The FFA had some travel expenses for their conference, and then they spent $600-$700 on some new brood fish or brood stock for their aquaculture program. So, that's what was going on there. We bounce back with first page then. Crop production services, $1,500 for ice melt. That's, I believe, three pallets. And so, we have a pallet in each town that we have a building right now. And hopefully, those will get us through. Just going on the way. Right below that, I'm gonna let Kevin address the bill for $3,900 to Patty Joe Daisy.
Right now?
Yeah.
When we got in a situation where we were hiring a teacher librarian, if you remember, we had to use administrative decision license with the DE because we could not attract a certified teacher librarian. And that was approved. And then, as a support mechanism, what we did is we set up a teacher librarian with a recently-retired teacher librarian as a mentor and as giving her support. And that person is Patty Daisy. She had, oh, I forget how many years of experience at South Central Calhoun. So, that's what that is.
Dr. Feeney has reimbursed for some curriculum supplies. Let's see, next page.
John, let's go back to Iowa Central Community College.
Yeah.
Is that a second half of tuition?
There's two, yeah, two things there. The first one, obviously, was the books at the bookstore. We had to replace some books this fall. And then, we'd be finishing up first semester tuition with that $6,600. And they, their billing comes through for tuition at different stages. We have really three different types of tuition going on there. We have online tuition for kids taking online classes. We have paying for credits for class, college credit classes that our teachers are teaching. And then, the third category would be their instructors on our campus. So, their billing comes through at different varying times for those. This one here, I believe, is the online stuff. Next page, the only other thing I really had highlighted was the region 12 bill. That's two routes, one to Storm Lake daily and one to Carroll three times a week, I believe. We're working on those. If we get that bus in that we ordered this summer, a lot of that'll go away. And then, we're working on some ideas for second semester for the Carroll route. Maybe we can handle that in-house. So, trying to get rid of that bill.
Is that bus coming from Thomas, too?
Yeah.
Yeah. What's going on there? Do you know? Or are they just struggling to?
They identified the issue of leaking something. And so, before sending them out, they have that fixed. Now, they're out doing the road tests and whatnot. So, we're hoping by January. But we're at the mercy of...
Yeah. No, I understand that.
Of that. But I just assume they'll get it tested and fixed before we're out on our routes.
We paid for them totally, yeah?
Not with the Thomas, because we don't have those yet.
On the next page, Great American Opportunities. That's a fundraiser for prom that the juniors do. Iowa Parkinson's for $3,400 is a fundraiser. And then, trophies plus for $1,200 is medals and awards for this spring's upcoming track season. And then, just additional supplies for letter winners. Kelly was running low on stuff when I found out. And then, also on that page, Thomas Bus Sales, $65,000, related to the issue we were just talking about. But they brought in two brand-new diesel buses for us to use until these propane buses are in. And this is basically our first payment on our propane buses when they get here. So...
So, do we have to keep track of miles?
No, it's free. There's no, it's not a lease or a rent. It'll be free loaning.
And what's the difference in mileage between the propane versus diesel? See where I'm going with this?
Miles per gallon, I mean.
Yeah, diesel will get a little better, but it's three times the cost per gallon gas. Yeah.
Probably four.
We'll be out some operating expense.
Are we gonna cover any of that?
I doubt it, but we can ask.
We haven't asked.
The worst thing is they can do is say no.
Yeah, we haven't asked. So... Anything else? Anybody have something circled or highlighted? All right, how do you entertain a motion to approve the bill to Alberta Oil for fuel for $1,009.30?
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, four zero.
On this next part, do I need to abstain because of CPS?
I don't know so.
Okay.
Entertain a motion, then, to approve the three sets of minutes, the financial reports, and the remaining bills on account. Motion?
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero.
Okay, so then, we'll move on to the education spotlight.
Wait, not seeing him. Maybe we could call on the music people, and they could perform something for us.
Can you guys talk about the Flex Ed Center at all?
(laughing)
No?
Is the orchestra there?
We could come back to that.
If Gene shows up, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, let's move on with the intent to come back if Gene shows up. We'll move on to reports.
Couple of things, just to update some of the stuff that is being talked about. First thing would be the one-to-one initiative that the district has been studying for quite a period of time and got real serious about it this fall. We're really looking at a high school rollout. We'll ask for this at the February board meeting from you. We're looking at a fall rollout of Macintosh laptops for grades nine through 12. That's where the committee has arrived, and we'll be able to explain the rationale for that. Included with that will also be, I'm calling it a phase two slash three plan, that we'll talk about some of the other things that will be occurring, such as taking existing laptops from the high school and moving them to the middle school and elementary level. When would we anticipate going fully one-to-one in the middle school, and then what are we gonna do at the elementary? Year one of what the proposal will be will be at the high school. And the reason of that is that the platform that's been selected will pretty much use up what we've been budgeting for this. And we knew that was a possibility. But we'll give you more details in February. Calendar committee is the second thing, and we continue to have discussions internally regarding specifically the viability of pros and the cons of a four-day instructional week. And we still need to have some community forums to talk about that. We're getting some feedback, both pro and con, and putting a list of things together that we want to answer and try to answer to the best of our ability. So, that's proceeding. Again, just on the timeline that the DE gives us, is that that will be a February board agenda item as well, because it has a March 1 deadline for application. One of the, I think, is a very exciting thing, and it'll be in that spotlight later, is we're in the process of purchasing a 3D printer for the industrial technology department. And it's a costly, it's a costly thing, obviously. But about $10,000, nine or $10,000 of it comes from Perkins funding, federal government funding. And then, we'll supplement the rest with the Pebble and Save accounts. But if you haven't seen the 3D printers, what they're able to do just absolutely blows you away. And from a learning perspective, what it'll allow our students to do is to do the design feature with the CAD system and all of those things, and then actually be able to build a prototype and have it in hand of whatever it is that they're designing. And some of the stuff that we've seen is pretty incredible. So, once we get our head around how that all works, we'll want to take a trip out to the shop and have the kids demonstrate it sometime this spring. So, we're pretty excited about that. Kind of completes that learning cycle. The other thing I guess I would address would be that in the coming months, probably, who knows how far down the line, but Iowa Central Community College is in the process of looking at developing what they're calling regional academies. And these regional academies are really being driven by vocational needs. When you look at the cost of industrial tech, for instance, if that could be centralized to where multiple schools could send kids to that academy or to that area, as well as pick up some additional core coursework, there's some logic to that. And this has been piloted the last two years in eastern Iowa with Kirkwood Community College in the Cedar Rapids area. And so, both Prairie Lakes AEA and Iowa Central are getting on board. And I think it has great potential, and I think it has even better potential if we can host one of the regional academies. So, that's what we're attempting to do. I think it's a good thing, and we might as well make it a really good thing for our kids, convenient. So, that's kind of what the plan is. So, I'll be visiting with some different people from industry within the area about getting behind this and becoming partners and pursuing that. ESAC would be a really fine place for one of these. And the last thing, I didn't even have written in my notes, because I wrote my notes before Friday. Might as well just address it publicly. And I sent you all emails about what happened on Friday at the high school. And just, I think, let's just play it out there. That's what we've been trying to do. Somehow, I would like to blame this on Mailer, but he had absolutely nothing to do with it. What happened is that probably about 10 o'clock, 9:30, we went to clean the gym floor. And with a product called Gym Tacker, I believe it is, which is a waterless cleaner. And it's one that we've used in virtually every gym in the district at one time or another. Something happened on this particular time. Maybe we did a larger chunk of the gym. Maybe it was atmospheric conditions. Maybe the wind was out of the north, because the doors to the gym were open, and it swooped all the air back to the school. But what we ended up with by late morning was a pretty smelly high school with the fumes from this product. So, we had a decision to make at that point. The decision was really, what are we gonna do with the kids? And it seemed to me, we had two options. And so, I guess, I had, I guess I did. I advocated that the best thing to do was to allow students to leave with parental permission. Our other option would be is to keep all 300 kids on the first floor, which really wasn't impacted by the smell. And so, that's why we obviously chose to let the students go. And with parental permission, they text or called. And it was really quite a, it was quite a good process in the small gym, the way everybody jumped in and helped out. And it worked out fine. I don't do much of anything with social media, but I'm gonna go out on a limb and say there's probably some different fabrications out there, or stretches of what really happened. This wasn't the lacquer product. It wasn't a finished product. It wasn't toxic. It wasn't flammable. The fire marshal showed up Friday afternoon and confirmed that as well. It really was a situation of a very safe product that never did what it did on this particular case. And I don't have a good explanation for that. It just was. Someone asked me, "Well, what are you gonna do to make sure that that doesn't happen again?" Seems to me, the answer is, we're not going to use that product when kids are in the building, just in case something like that were to happen again. But symptoms were that some kids had some headaches. One kid did, I don't know if collapse is the right word, but went down. And so, was taken for medical attention and was fine by the time they really got to the medical facility. A little fresh air does...
Is it just like a vapor, like a, like a bad kind of a vapor?
It was.
I think so.
Did you guys notice it in your offices?
No, not at all. But again, well, we think, again, I'm guessing, what I think happened is the doors to the north were open to ventilate the gym. And depending on what the wind and everything did, it swooped it back and then got sucked in through the stuff. Plus, we have so much in and out with doors that it doesn't take much to have it happen. So, contrary to anything that might be out there, that the school was evacuated, it wasn't evacuated, students were given the option to go home. Had somebody asked me today, "Well, what would be your estimate of the percentage of kids that went home?" And I said, "I think it was 100."
On a Friday?
Yeah.
Given that option?
Exactly.
So, and I don't mean to make light of it. It's something, if we could go back and change the hands of time, we would. This shouldn't happen. But we live, we learn, and we move on and make sure we do better next time. But everybody's fine. That's all I got.
I got a question about the, I don't know what to call it.
Academy.
Yeah, the academy. How does that really work? I mean, it looks like, looks like we have to pay. We have to pay a certain amount to have kids come to our school and learn.
For this...
And then, we get paid from the college.
All of those details are to be worked out. That's a draft that's taken off from that one in eastern Iowa. The concept for them, for Iowa Central to get involved in this, is that they have to have guaranteed spots, guaranteed revenue stream. So, each district participates would have to, I believe they were talking about, would have to guarantee 10 seats over a 10-year period, you know, 10 seats each year for 10 years.
Yeah.
Is what the commitment would be. And those numbers will likely change as this moves along. But that is, that is the concept. The other thing is, is if we were to be in a position to host, it's possible that some of our teachers would actually be hired for part of that time to teach at that academy.
We're not talking facility or anything, or possibly?
No.
Just using...
And the facility really is Iowa Central's concern. But we want to, if we want to be considered for hosting one of these things, we want to have a plan in place. By the way, here's an awesome facility.
That's what I was wondering. Is it something that you think we already have?
Um, yeah. I don't have something in the back of my head yet, other than we're gonna start some discussion with some of the industry people and let them know. Because, for instance, this would be, you know, if you look at welding and some machine operating and different things in that avenue, you just have to go to AVAPO, and they're always looking for people. And this can be a win-win. This is how I look at it. So...
They'll be great to talk to you about things.
Yeah. Tomorrow at 1:30.
So, it may not be a classroom like you're sitting up in the math classroom. It might...
It'd be both. There'll be a spot for vocational equipment. And then, they'd also will need some classrooms, because let's say a kid takes industrial tech for, you know, the first two periods. What is he or she gonna do for that third period, because you're chunked in the morning? Then, they would take an English class or math class or whatever. That's also sort of, that's the model that's out there.
With the model that's out there, is there sharing money from the state for that?
That I don't know, Jay. I don't know the answer to that, if that's, if that would constitute operational sharing or not. We'll get further into that. I don't know the answer.
I guess my ultimate question is, are we gonna, are we gonna make money on this? Are we gonna lose money on this? Are we gonna break even?
Yes.
Yes. Good answer. So, yeah, that's to come. Right.
All depends how it's structured. But yeah, I just wanted to get it on your radar. This is something that, within a couple of years...
It's a good opportunity.
It could be. And we want to be, we want to be at the table for the discussions.
And you know what? The opportunity, one of the good opportunities, is what we're gonna talk about here in 8D, is marketing and marketing our school. You know, we've got this here. Come here, just like the 3D printer. And the first thing I thought about with the 3D printer is, let's put that on TV.
Cool, is that?
Yeah.
It is.
So, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Feeney? Or Mike gave us his report. Mike, is there anything you wanted to talk about in your report specifically, or?
Well, a lot of the deals were come out, the investigations that Iowa brought out, we're finally getting a look at the EPR involved in that. And then, you see our AYP reports, and then I put in some national figures of why we're hearing that the United States is not doing all that great nationally in the different areas. The Wall Lake Elementary does pay for jobs. They did pay for last year. Now, maybe they'll not segregate house and individual buildings at all. They'll just go state by state and then national. That's all they do. So, but we were part of that. And I'd like to say, to music directors here, I attended the high school music band concert, and it was an excellent concert.
Awesome.
Very much. It was, Donna Colby and Bill took care of the elementary concert, they're all two.
Middle School Thursday night.
And middle school's coming on Monday, so, yeah. It was, it was fun. The concert was really nice to watch. They've been great.
Yeah, they really have. That's a good point. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to 6B, Iowa Association of School Boards Convention.
Amanda attended, and she's gonna do some talking. And Lisa, I don't know if you have anything?
I went down for the delegate.
There's anything, but jump in. We're...
Go ahead, Amanda. You know, I'm just gonna kind of talk about a few things that kind of stuck out. And I didn't get that email sent to you, as like I said. So, I'm just gonna bear with me. You can ask questions later on. I can email you about I kind of think about it Of course, it was kind of hard to pick some of the things to go to, because there's so many cool things offered at the same time. The first one that I picked to go to, though, was building a board-superintendent team to support student success. Council Bluffs gave a really, really good presentation on this. And I don't know how many of you have visited. They sound like a school that I would love to go and just hear all kinds of things about, because they really have it together. They actually receive an award for what they have going on, what their board has going on. Just a few other things that they hit on that none of you would probably be real receptive to, I'm guessing. Their meetings can sometimes go, they start at 6:00, they go till 9:10. They even go until midnight before, so they take it. It's, they just have a lot of really good ideas to do. And am I saying that I want us to sit here for six hours twice a month? No. But they have a lot of really good ideas that, again, I will email you guys, so that it's more understanding. Because my emails are all chicken scratch, and I didn't get it all really together. I think I should've. Their relationship with their superintendent, I was really, really, really impressed with. They have like a quarterly review. And that in turn gave the superintendent time to sit down and really kind of, you know, it was behind closed doors. It gave the superintendent time to, because it was a review, so it could be. And you got to really lay it all out there. And I think that that would be, I think that would be awesome. Their superintendent loved it. You know, she said she was intimidated at first, but then she like looks forward to that. So, I just, they were really, really, they really kept me. I wasn't bored at all. And then, the second thing that I went to was our journey to reorganization, improved opportunities for students. West Fork, wasn't real impressed with it. I didn't take a whole lot away from it, so I'm not really gonna go into detail. They battled the same things that we kind of do, you know, what we're up against. And it was like hearing the same thing that we've all talked about. They're, one of the funniest guys there was that little Chinese guy. Do you know who I'm talking about?
Can't say his name, but yep.
Amazing to listen to. Scott McLoud, is that his name? Scott McLoud was also there and had...
Yes.
Was it he? I've heard you mention him a lot, too. And then, this Kevin Honeycutt. Have you heard him talk at all? He's into arts and his way. Have you guys heard of his name at all? You, too? He is awesome to listen to. It's a whole different take on how to get our kids to really... Creativity is really becoming a big part of business, and branding, and marketing. And they're starting to see the creativity, creative people as more than just, you know, it's not all about your college degree and whatnot. If you are a creative person, and how they're using that to move forward with social media and with everything, it was just really interesting to hear how that all played in, and that everybody has something to bring to the table. And it was, so that was really cool. The other thing, and probably what I would love to see, talking to the Spencer School Board. They have a really cool program going on to really connect teachers with the school board and the whole system. And I talked to you guys a little bit about it, the whole lighthouse research thing. You know, for me, that was new. I didn't, and I would have to ask you guys what we've done with that in the past. But they just, they, a couple of really quick things, you know, we're talking about, what's the math that they do? Help me out in elementary?
CGI.
Yes. And I am loving it. And I hope that it eventually transitions on over to middle school, because it seems right now that we're looking at, they do this, and then all of a sudden, shh, and then it's... What they're doing, she showed us a sample video of this. And the teachers, they're picking teachers to do these projects. And they do like a five-minute video on it. And then, that comes to a school board maybe once a month. And they, we get to, and then they have the board work on it and see if they can figure it out, to really connect. It was, it was awesome, though. I love the interacting. I mean, that way, we really know. I mean, how much do we really know? Like they said, you don't need to go visit all these classrooms. And you, you know, it's not something that, I mean, because then we all take our own opinion away from, away from that. And if that kind of comes to us, and we're all sitting here doing it together and really figuring out what they're doing in each classroom, and we assign a different teacher a little flip cam, and they, you know, or I think that that can really, because I hate it when something's brought to my attention. I have no idea what they're even talking about. I mean, really, how many of us here know exactly? So, they had a lot of good suggestions for that. And their board seems to just really work well. And they haven't changed a whole lot of things because of what they're doing as well. So, it was very interesting. I could've, I could go to this. So, I hope that I'm aware of all the opportu, I could definitely attend something like this again. I think it was well worth the money. Yeah. So, feel free to email me with any questions on whatever. But I have all kinds of ideas, so watch out.
Ideas are good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good.
Lisa, do you have anything from the delegate assembly that was noteworthy?
Not really. That's more of a, just a...
Not really. That, that's more of a just a.
What were the big schools whining about?
I sat by a lady from Cedar Rapids and she was up to the microphone all the time trying to get the, I, yeah, it's just. Trying to think what their hot topic was that she was, I think about their special ed.
Imagine that.
Yeah. And the wording. I mean, just little words, you know, it's just how everybody takes it. That's, next time I'll go on Thursday and not go. That delegate for us is kind of a waste of time, I believe.
I know. First, I would love for there to be two people so you could break out and hit more and then we could all come together and give a little report. I would love that.
How many votes do we have? Two?
One.
One vote?
Yeah, one. And the lady beside me had 15, you know.
She was there as your answer.
She wouldn't share.
She talked her into what we needed.
You know, there were very, I should say very few ones. There was quite a few ones, but you know, it's just kind of a.
Every year it's kind, I mean, it's a neat, kind of a neat process, but every year you kinda feel like it's really geared towards the larger schools.
That's, yeah, yeah, that's true.
Is that overall? Do you think that that's kind of?
In the delegate assembly piece, it probably is, yeah. And it's one of the things that ISB has got to, is needing to address. There's, right now, there's a group of schools with total enrollment less than, I think 1,200, which we'd fall in that category, are wanting to get together and work within ISB for just small school issues. Just got an email two days ago about that. So.
It's amazing to see what the bigger schools have going on, doesn't get me wrong. I mean, that's where so many of these ideas and I think that you can scale it down a bit to fit us. And cause they have the capability, I mean, it's crazy to hear with a lot of them. One thing I will ask just real quick before I forget, but the, one of the other things I went to was one-on-one, or no, not the one-on-one. It was social media. And the statistics on that and how people use it and the numbers on that, well, number one on that, grill up on that. So it was kind of hard for me to understand, but I wasn't afraid to ask questions and the, and I have statistics I'll have to send you guys. But the mobile devices that people are using, you know, are they at a computer or then it's this? It's what we're all carrying around is what they're checking websites with. And I know that we're under construction when it comes to that. But the number one thing that was asked was, is your website mobile, you know, because there's a mobile version and then there's the other. And we do have a mobile version and it is very, but I would assume that that will continue to be worked on with.
We're, we're, yeah. And we're also considering or looking at anywhere, anyway, you know, a specific app that goes directly to your website. And some districts are doing that. We haven't just quite figured out how much is that worth.
Right.
It's kind of a premium cost right now to develop. So those are great thoughts.
I don't know if you filled out the survey or if on the Iowa school board, but one thing I would like to add, or I did, to tell them to send the book earlier. Cause I know they have it all laid out, but it's, you get it that day, you know? And you have, yeah, you're flipping through those pages to try to decide what to go to and that's.
Well, let's just plan on next year, both of us going. And if anybody else likes you all.
Chuck told them for years. We've told them that, but it's like, I think there's gotta be a way that.
Thank you.
Okay. That was very good, ladies. Thank you. Number seven, unfinished business. Discuss and/or approve Series 100 school district board policies. And I went through these today and well, there's really nothing in there. Really. No, we have to have them, but I don't know what the reason is. The one that I, the one that I really noticed that everybody else would, would, I mean, guess, notice too is the bullying, anti-bullying and, you know. I, I wouldn't, I didn't read anything in there I would change. I don't know if anybody else.
I have no recommended changes either.
Curtis?
Could you mind just what the Series 100 policy covers?
It's just entitled school district and it gives a snapshot of the school district.
Yeah, it's, it's really.
It's about six policies.
It's pretty bland.
Six policies with, with a couple of A and Bs in there. So bullying is the biggest one. It's eight pages. All the other ones are, are one paragraph. So.
Feel, feel free to read them.
And I did go through them about a month ago.
It won't take you very long.
Compared to Series 600, which still has to be done this year, which are longer.
So we need a motion to approve Series 100?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. Okay, new business. Discuss and/or approve modified allowable growth, application for dropout prevention. Dr. Feeny, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, this, we've been doing this for a number of years and just a little bit of a backdrop is that the state allows you to levy locally. You don't wanna hide anything and it's always been the same is that this is a local levy. This isn't state aid. But it has to, you levy up to a certain amount that's allowable according to their system. And, and that's all property tax. And then it's very specific about what you can use that money for. And as you can guess, modified allowable growth application for dropout prevention. It's the, the different things that we're doing for the students at risk. It would include the Flex Ed Center that we deal with a couple of, or an at-risk position at each level. It also is used in the past and we will continue to do it for Odyssey Ware, if you remember what, what that was or is. We use that regularly at the middle school, high school and Flex Ed Center. Also used to some of the MAG money this year for purchasing some cloud-based software, for lack of a better term, at the middle school. And so everything in the, in this is focused at keeping kids in school. That is the purpose. I strongly, 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 strongly advocate that we approve this. John can talk to you about money.
Let's, let's look, page 19 in your packet is the actual budget that will be asked you to consider for approval. The maximum allowed by the state for our school district is $385,588. Of that, 25% must be funded through regular program district cost, which is line four, 96 through 397. Leaving us a remainder of $289,191 is what the actual request to the state for modified allowable growth will be. So that's that page. The next page then is the breakdown on how we propose that we spend that money. As you can see, there's a group of eight or 10 staff members involved. And some of them are completely funded through this program. Some are partially funded. The far right-hand column is what all direct your attention to and you'll see the totals. And the hashtag in the middle is $356,005. So that's total salary and benefits that we propose through this program. $29,584 for Odyssey Ware, EduCare, Achieve, $3,000 and any other supplies for these programs.
To reach.
Yep, to reach the total budgeted amount of $385,588. So.
What did we ask for last year?
Last year, I didn't write down the dollar amount. I looked at the tax difference print. The tax difference is two cents. Last year we asked for 88 cents. This year we're gonna ask for 90 cents.
I think it was like 200, about 260,000 total.
Instead of 289.
Give or take. And that's all, how they, the formula works with that is there's criteria that we go through in the application that identifies kids that and their potential for dropout. And if that, depending on that number, it's all predicated on that. So.
I didn't think, I, I looked at the tax rate grant. I didn't think to look at the total. But last year it was 88 cents. This year it would be 90 cents when we do our budget in the spring.
And just for the record too, is that is included in what our total property tax rate is for the, for this year. It's, it's in there. So we're not talking a 90 cent increase. We're talking a two cent increase.
Does anybody have any other questions about that? You wanna make a motion on it? I, I mean, we've been doing this, how long we've been doing this, John? We've been asking for this for quite a few years.
Since we've been ESAC County, we've done it in one form or another every year. Prior to that, WLBA had done it for quite a while. SAC was just getting into it the last couple of years that they were still on their own, right?
So, so this is nothing new?
Nope.
Nope. Curtis has a question.
Curtis?
Is it possible to not be approved for this?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Have you ever been rejected?
You or me?
The process, it's a web-based application that you go through and the reader at the state approves parts of it and sends it back to you. If it's not up to speed, then you have to keep redoing it until she approves it. So no, we have never been turned down, have ultimately, have parts of it. Have I had the privilege of doing it more than once? Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve that modified allowable growth request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you. Kids, thank you.
Okay, B. Discuss and/or approve music department request for travel.
Just, just probably, yeah, be careful what you ask for. Just a little bit of backdrop and tell me if I get any of this wrong, the two of you that, you know, the, at least since we, we have been consolidated every four years. And I think the logic there, I'm assuming is that at least once while a kid is in the high school music program, they get this opportunity. It's every four years. So in 2000, they take a trip. The trip is all fundraised by the students and under the tutelage of the directors. So there's, we're really not talking district money that goes into this. 2011, if I remember right, they went to San Antonio and I believe they're, they're setting a trip up or wanting to set a trip up to Orlando in 2015. They try to balance, really do a nice job frankly, of making it a fun experience for the kids, but there's also expectations for, there's, there's some learning opportunities that are built in and I don't know that Ryan or Catherine were so far out that they have all the details in. But there'll be some educational components as well as performance components. So it's not just a, it's not just a trip. There's, there's educational value in it.
So a question that I would have, not to interrupt you.
Probably did your presentation for you, didn't I? Sweet.
I mean, obviously we aren't gonna have 50 kids go, right? So.
It's band and choir.
Oh, it is. Oh, so it's both. So we will have, we will have a lot of kids. So my, the question I was gonna ask is, are we gonna have to ride with somebody else down there? And, and is that gonna be another school? And then when we get down there to perform, will we perform as ESAC County or will it be a huge?
It's a good question. No, we, we have our own charging buses. We're, we're looking at probably 90 music kids next year in band and choir. Will they all go? We don't know yet. But you know, some fraction of that number should, should go. But no, we perform on our own.
Really?
And there's three performance opportunities that we're looking at. Hopefully we can do all three. They don't schedule that till, till a year out. So we can't apply for it until the end of March of this spring for 2015. But one is just a, a concert at Disney where the band choir will perform. You know, whether it's in Main Street Disney or in the Magic Kingdom or wherever that's to be determined. And then each group gets to have a clinic and I, I can't speak to the choir one, but the band one, you go in and you learn a Disney song. And they cut a, a video of you guys playing it with clips from the Disney movie and they have a Disney professional there that talks about how to get the most out of rehearsals and performances.
The choir has the, has the same, same experience. It's, this is where it's most educational because they get to work with the actual studio musicians. Which the studio musician is different than what our students do. Where they have plenty of time to rehearse for their performances. They're working with the musicians who have to come in and work, work as big as an hour in a performance. So that's, I would be forward to that mostly as an issue.
And I would guess that the kids may, may not understand all that right away, but when they get down there, they'll think that's really cool. I think that's a really awesome opportunity for our kids.
Experience that students normally don't get to be a part of, especially when they're blessed, because we all have studios that are playing out music like that.
Kind of what sold us on going to Orlando, honestly. Who was that experience?
How did you find out about it? How do you know?
A friend of mine teaches band at Spencer and they had done it and he said, you gotta try it. They, they rotated trips like we do every two years lately, but and he said, we're not rotating anymore. We're going to Orlando every time.
Because they loved it that much and they got a lot out of it.
And they marched to the Main Street parade. We're, we're not gonna march.
So are you going down there? Are you supportive?
Yeah. Chaperones?
As I read through this, it's all, it's all bus time?
Pardon me?
Can they do a plane? And what's, what's the cost difference between bus versus plane?
The plane costs more, obviously, but then the, the other problem you get is then, once you get down there, to get them from.
You know, a hard way to get around, yeah.
You have to have a bus to get you there. Sure. The transit, if they are there, it won't handle the distance you have. So then you end up running a bus as well as your plane ticket. So you're really way ahead by just taking a bus down there.
And also we don't have to worry about checking instruments or equipment or anything like that. We just put it on the bus and we have it, we're not controlled the entire time.
Yeah.
Back to your original question, I think you're probably somewhat thinking of EFT tours where the kids go overseas. Because there they are combined with other schools and all of that. And this isn't.
We're representing ourselves.
Yeah. How cool is that?
Does every child with music in band, then everybody is offered this? Would there be anybody that would be held behind for any reason due to finances?
They're, they're offered four fundraisers. We've already had one. We'll have another one this spring, then one in the fall, one spring and next year. So they have the opportunity to fundraise all of it. Now, some of them just write a check and some of them get a little in the way.
We'll have some students who will fundraise for the entire trip out of the fundraisers we have over the next couple of years.
What's the expected cost? What was it? About $1,100. There's some variables in there, you know, gas prices going up and down and we have, having less kids go than we expect. We're looking at about $1,119 right now. The other, the only, the only thing, the only reason we might hold a kid back is the fact is that they're not in good standing, you know, they're paid.
Right, right. I would, yeah.
Oh yeah, definitely would expect that.
I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that nobody was rejected because, I mean, if they're, if they're given the opportunity to fundraise all of it, then they should get off the ducks and do it. And, and.
Yeah.
So, but I didn't. So if there's enough and you feel like they, there's every way possible to raise $11,000 for these four fundraisers and they should be able to do it. We shouldn't have to worry about children that are maybe.
And, and in the past, we have had community members come up and say, you know, we have kids that can't take the trip and they don't. So we try to let the kids know, but there are other ways as well. Most of them wanna go do it.
So what are we paying for? Or what?
We don't, we don't, but we should, yes, we should, we should have a motion, right, John, to approve the music department trip?
Well, they need a motion, at least a directive, so they know they can carry on.
Yeah.
Jay's got a question.
If during the fundraising process, let's say the base price is $1,100, a student raises $1,500, we do the extra 400.
They have a couple of options. A lot, a lot of them will gift it to a brother or sister who might be going on the trip as well. But if they don't have a brother or sister like that, we, we often do let them have that back because they, they fundraise that and they can use that for.
So it stays within the family, basically?
Correct. Now, if, if a student raises money and decides not to go on the trip, then that stays in our trip fund. Cause we felt like they shouldn't be fundraising.
Just to get money.
Under the idea that they're going on the trip and they're.
It's their job.
But if they do go on the trip and they have extra money, then they, they can.
I think that's great. I think that that teaches a child, I, I think, to get them to go out and ask for things.
Does a lot of things.
It does. With my kids, I, I am not the parent that says, hey, I go to work. Here's the plan. My kids are raising money. Can you, you, uh-uh. Turn in an empty paper if you're not gonna go do the work. So yeah.
So do we wanna, do we wanna make a motion? So do we wanna, do we wanna make a motion and, and approve this for these guys?
Asking my opinion, yes.
Yeah. I believe that, too. Go ahead.
I don't even know what to say, because I haven't learned that yet, so I make a motion to...
Approve. Show moved.
So you're doing fine, though, make a motion to approve...
To approve the trip.
The music department trip. Spring, two thousand and fifteen.
We have a second?
Jay's seconded it.
Jay's seconded it. Sorry. We got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks, and good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
What happens if there's a war going on?
Typically, have a problem finding, kind of chaperone.
What's wrong with, we'll take as many as we can get.
Is there anything written in the contract, you're gonna have signs, about a war?
About what?
About a war?
A war.
For instance...
Like terrorism-type, terrorism-war-type thing, you know? If it has to be postponed due to national security issues? Just bring it up, there's a long time.
The kids do have the option of individually purchasing trip insurance, where they can pay a hundred dollars, and then they can get something as much as that hundred dollars back.
Might be a question sometime, who knows?
It might be nice, because what if the full boss here in Iowa then, raised and lost all their money because the, you're not waiting to see one of them.
I forgot about that.
You're looking at ninety, ninety thousand, oh, you're a hundred thousand dollars.
You're a credible one, and Spencer and everybody else, it seems, that, that's when I read that, it scares me.
Okay, so, let's move on. Thanks, guys. New business, C. Discuss and plan for reduction of operating costs. This is coming from our work session the other night, and we have some follow-up questions that we're gonna, that we're gonna talk about, and...
Really just... Yeah, just really looking, and these were things that John had taken as notes at the work session, and, and things, and again, in a work session, you really can't take action. So, these were questions, and I would say, if there's anything you wanna add to them, fine, otherwise, I'd suggest directing us to give you the answers for the next work session.
Show moved.
We got a motion in a second to direct administration to get the answers to all these questions. Was there any other questions that anybody had, or anybody thought of, other than these? These are all really, really good questions. Okay, we got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
When do you wanna set that meeting for?
Can we wait till we get down to ten?
Okay.
Let's wait, John. Okay, eight D. Discussion on ESC marketing and branding. And we've talked about a lot of things tonight that I think we can put in there. I mean, this trip, how many schools around here are gonna go on this trip? Three D printer? And there probably aren't a lot of schools around here that have a three D printer, so, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not a marketing guy.
Even the figures that we're talking about getting into all these things.
One-to-one? Yeah.
And maybe, I'm not a marketer, but I've been around the block several times. One thing is, the, I would, my suggestion would be is to start with, what exactly is our brand? And I think I gave you a couple of examples, which I think are still confused.
Right on, yes.
You know, you drive by the baseball field at SAC City, and it has E.S. You go through other parts of the district, and they'll refer to it as ESC. Sometimes I still get an email from people, and they're, at, at their signature line, it says ESCO, and I'm not sure where that, I assume that was ESC, and then county is some point. So, to me, a starting point is, is that, and the raider head, what, what, this is what ESAC is. And brand it, and then we can start talking about compiling a larger list and, and marketing campaign and stuff. But to me, that's the, you got more marketing background than I do, but to me, that made sense.
Absolutely, it's consistency, and we're going through that right now with the new owners of my company, and having, building, I mean, because we just pieced everything together as best I could, and now, we've got what I call big wings coming in, and they're all, you know, it's, and they're doing everything that I've wanted to do for a very long time. And that, I think, if we want to market our school, that we need to follow those same steps, and it starts small, and then you build on that. And who are we? What, what do we wanna convey to others? What do we wanna... So, those little things that you was talking about, absolutely needs to be the very first, you know, it needs to be, and we need to think about, are we, are we willing to change some of those signs? Are we willing, you know, because all of us go with it, you can't just talk about it, and that's it. It's, are you gonna put the money up to change those signs that are there? Are we gonna make everything consistent?
That would come out of our Piddle account, would it not?
That follows through onto everything, onto your website, and onto your, everything.
But I, and again, I don't have the history that everybody else in this room has, but since I've been here, I was always under the belief that the shortening of ESAC County is ESC, and if you see everything that I write, it always says ESC. And that doesn't make it right, but that's what I was, I guess, not led to believe, that's what I deduced.
So what are we officially, who are we officially?
Our official name is ESAC County Community School District, and I think it's really up to this group to hone in on making...
And I think that that is, I think it's a basis, too, for positive movement forward, with everybody, you know, trying to bring everybody together, and let's, let's kinda rebrand ourselves and be, this is what we are in her...
With, with this marketing and branding, do we need to put a committee together that would include staff, administration, and community?
I would say, yeah, that's a, that's a great way to go with it.
You get a few people for each, and you get...
If you try to throw something at them, you don't want, you want them to buy in to what you're doing. You want, you want some ownership, I think, but, I don't think we're that far off on the brand, on, on, I mean, but, we need to settle on something, and then, we need to make the directive that any staff member that is buying shirts, or whatever they're doing, that this is what we do, this is who we are.
Right, so that it's not different.
Well, I'd throw a motion out there that we ask the administration to put together a steering committee to create a marketing and branding avenue.
Second.
You guys get that down?
Yep.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to have administration come up with the steering committee for branding in ESAC County.
Maybe before you vote, if I might, Jay, you mentioned teachers, administrators, community, other thoughts of who ought to be on this steering committee? Fair representation of...
I think you have to have all communities involved, not just...
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't think it'd be a bad idea to have, have some large businesses, maybe have somebody involved in that? Maybe some business owners? And these are the people who market...
Why do you say large businesses?
Well, businesses. I guess it, you know, doesn't matter.
Yeah, because honestly, when you say lar-, yeah, and I know what you're, I mean, what I think of, look at me, I'm not a large business.
Yeah, any business that would market themselves.
Yeah.
I don't care if they're bigger, bigger, small. I don't know why I said large.
I, no, but I...
Well, they may be more likely to have, have somebody doing that, is what I'm thinking.
Well, yeah, I'm su-, I mean, they have more resources than a smaller one, just like we were talking about the schools, you know? Cedar Rapids has much more resources than...
What about campus students?
ESC does, so...
Kids, yeah, I think that'd be great.
I was just gonna say.
But business owners in general.
Yes.
You know?
Around here, it just seems like the really, and I don't know, I could be way off on this, the large business owners are usually the ones that are here with us, it's people working for them. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
That's kinda how I see it. The small business owners are the ones that you're gonna walk right up to and say, oh, yeah, you're the one making all the decisions.
Give me fifty bucks. Just a piece of trivia, at least, I think it's still true, is that ESAC County is the largest single employer in SAC County, I believe.
That's an awesome factor.
Okay, let's take that back, that's an awesome thought. I think that's correct.
Feels like I'm in a new barrel.
The only reason I say that is I talked to Nancy Huska a couple of years ago, and she asked what our employees were, and she said, oh, you passed us, that's what, that was coming up.
What do you think, what's it at, do you think, just, if you have to guess?
Numbers?
How many employees do you have?
Hundred and forty, maybe, thirty. I mean, you start counting subs, and sub-buster, and such, you start...
If you put everybody in... Well, if you put everybody in, it's gonna be a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty, probably.
Yeah, but not every month, I mean, no, if, if it was some, one month.
And you have seasonal coaches, et cetera.
That has nothing to do, I just... So, so we do have a motion in a second on the floor here, we need to have a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, five oh.
We'll get busy with it.
Okay, personnel, do we have any resignations?
No.
Good, so we'll move on to contracts, we have any contracts? No. Okay.
Might be a first.
That's good. Discuss future agenda items and set dates.
Well, the corresponding date in January, the third Monday, would be January twentieth. Time we've, in policy anyway, and you, I always refer to board policy, because that's what it says, you have, all policy also allows you to change it, obviously. Would be January twentieth, six o'clock, and I don't know where you wanna meet.
Did you say something about the middle school, possibly?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've met there before.
The weekend circuit tours?
We, we have, yeah, and I, I, one of the things I suggested as, or just suggested, thought of and shared, I would ask that you're probably gonna be looking at another work session in, in January. If we did a board meeting at one of the buildings, and a work session at the other, then we would have all of the buildings with the board, with the exception of taking a tour of the high school. So the next time we're there, we can do that as well. I just think that would be good for the board to tour those facilities in light of the discussion on reducing operating costs.
So we could have the board meeting at the middle school, and the work session at the elementary school in SAC. That works for everybody.
Are we gonna have the work session before the next board meeting? No.
That's up, that's up to you, I, I would, it's up to you. I, I would, my guess would be no.
Is there anything on the school calendar for the twentieth, John?
All I had on mine is the varsity basketball, and it, there's nothing varsity, so I don't...
More than likely on Monday, there's a JV game of some sort. And that's gonna be the nature of the beast this time of year.
Middle school, SAC City, correct?
Six P.M.
Six, six o'clock, middle school.
And well, usually, we, we meet in the library there, but we'll scope out if there's a more intimate room.
And that date works for everybody? Twenty, that works for me. Anybody got any suggestions on the work session?
Well, is it that something, I mean, we were talking about, I mean, the thrill of this, how fast we wanna move on this?
Well, and, and here's the thing, I mean, we, we directed administration tonight to get the questions that we had answered, and so we'll get that information at the next board meeting. So, we really don't wanna have another work session before the board meeting, because then we won't know the answers to those questions.
I'd say sometime in the end of January, first part of February, gives us enough time to do a good job with what you're asking, and gets us past the board meeting. Would be my recommendation. So, yeah, I say you just pick a day, and in the wrong month, that would, I don't know.
Is it silly to do something like that after a board meeting? Is that just take too much time in one night? Or is that not...
Right after, right after a board meeting?
Depends if you've been on the road since four-thirty or not.
Oh, come on! I'll bring coffee.
Today, it wouldn't have been good, is that what you're saying?
I, I, I'll have to say, I did get a nap, so...
There's nothing wrong, it really isn't. Typically, our board meetings are an hour to an hour and a half, add another hour, we're at two and a half, that's not...
I just know, for me, it's sometimes easier to...
Walk out one night instead of...
Yes.
The, the flips, I mean, and I'm fine with that. The flip side would be is that when you have a work session that's pretty focused, and that is all that you're thinking about, if you're on a different night, too.
Yeah.
I, I don't have an opinion, just tell me what you want.
I'd rather do one night than two myself. I mean, by the time you get kids practice this, and ballgames that, and John's got a kid involved with stuff, I mean, everybody's time is pretty tight.
Yeah, winter season always seems to be the most exciting, too.
So, what do you think about, instead of starting at six, start a little earlier than that?